Good evening and welcome. I'm going to try this. And welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. I'm president of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer a public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cellphone. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Our entire board team is present. And so with that, we're going to move forward with our pledges. If everyone will stand, face the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Next on our agenda is public comment. No one has signed up for public comment this evening, so we'll move forward, and I'll turn this over to Dr. -- Mr. Dindell to conduct our finance and audit committee workshop as he has a voice.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We've got some reports to begin with, and we start off tonight with the management oversight report in technology, and Ms. Doyle is going to help us with that tonight. So, welcome, Sharla.
Good evening, Dr. Moran and members of the school board. Can you hear me? Don't even turn it. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm here to give you a quick update about our technology department. So, it doesn't want to work for me tonight. See, even technology has challenges. Wrong one, that helped. Nope. Just hand me the mouse. That don't work. There we go. So, this is an overview of our department. We have 23 members in our department. This picture was taken at the beginning of the school year, and it has all of our members in it, and we are fully staffed right now. I can truly say that for the first time in a while. Over the last year, we've had lots of resignations and refilling of positions and stuff. We had a number of technicians. Some retired, some moved to better opportunities for them. So, we have myself, a secretary, my technical support manager who oversees 12 technicians for Level 2, eight are Level 1, a network team, as well as I have a project manager. And new this year is we have a cybersecurity analyst, which we're glad to add him to our team. And then occasionally, we'll have an intern from Howard College. And that's been less the last few years because there's just not been as many people participating in Howard College's technology program. But when they do have someone, we like to have them as an intern, and we've hired several of those interns through the years. Just a quick overview, and I won't read you all of this. We have over 35,000 devices, end-user devices that we take care of. About 28,000 of those are laptops, desktops, iPads, Chromebooks across the district, and then thousands of auxiliary end-user devices. 36 servers and 80 virtual servers, lots of network equipment, over 1,300 wireless access points, 272 bridges and routers, firewall and internet filtering. We have phone systems at every location, about 1,900 phones, about 1,300 IP-based security cameras, and many other network and end-user devices that we support and take care of. Over the years, technology has increased, and over the last 20 years, we've got almost five times the amount we were 20 years ago. So, we're a little over 5,600, and we're now almost at 28,000 end-user devices. And we fluctuate between 11 and 12 technicians to support that. So, that's about 2,500 devices per technician to support. Just a brief overview of our budget. The biggest portions of our budget go to telecommunications expenses. In other words, a phone, Wi-Fi connectivity wide area network, which connects all of our campuses back to the technology center and our internet access. Those expenses are before we take the -- get the E-rate discount because we pay for the bill, and then we file reimbursement, and the reimbursement goes back to the general fund. And then we also have a number of yearly expenses. For instance, our firewall, our high priority items, maintenance on them so that if there is an issue, we can get support on them quickly. And then like our filter product and several others that we pay for yearly. But those are our two biggest line items. Few highlights of some of the projects. Majority of these that I included here are things we did this past summer. We replaced the high school iPads with Chromebooks, shifted some of those iPads to our elementary campuses to get them to fully one-to-one, and then we sold some of our oldest of devices. And we supported the summer professional learning events. We prepped and supported devices for the elementary STEM camp. We supported summer school. We moved multiple labs at each of the high schools. We also reloaded devices in multiple labs and carts to prep them for the new school year. As you all know, we had lots of moving this past summer, and so we were part of that as well because that means moving technology and prepping it for the new school year. So, while we haven't opened McGill's new building yet, we are prepping for that. And we supported the merge of Austin and McGill campuses. We prepped and got the new wing of Fannin Elementary going and supported the merge of Altaloma and Fannin. New classrooms at Central High School, Sousa Building, which is our old class -- our old office area. And we moved Sanderson to classrooms to Reagan. We set up the CTE classrooms at the Central Oaks campuses. Another high priority area that we focus on is data security. As I mentioned, we added a cybersecurity analyst this year, which we're thrilled to have him. Data security is becoming bigger and bigger every day. We are almost complete with rolling out our multi-factor authentication. Actually, y'all are my last group to do, so I will be coming back to y'all very soon with instructions on how to set y'all up. And so now it's where the system will text you a code to let you into the system, and you just re-authenticate ever so often. And it's an extra security measure so somebody can't get into your account without your approval. A big project we've been doing this past year is the ASU Regional Security Operations Center, RSOC for short. That ASU, Angelo State University, is the first one funded in the state of Texas. There have been two more since then, and we, along with the city, were their first partners. And since then, they have expanded to a good amount of the school districts in this area. They provide 24/7 monitoring of our systems and alert us if there is any concerning activity or out of the norm on our end-user devices. And actually, tomorrow afternoon, they're adding a new appliance into our system to monitor traffic in a different manner that will also alert us if there's any anomalies in our traffic or out of the norms. There are several other resources that they provide us, but I won't get real technical with y'all. But they continue to expand and add resources to protect us and help us protect our data and our end-users. And it has been a great partnership between Angelo State and us, and it is truly one of those kudos to our administration, our technology department, and Angelo State's as well for being a part of this project. And we are -- they use us to show -- ASU's project to show off to others in the state of Texas. And we will continue to work to increase our data security levels. Other things that we focus on are safety and security. Those are big topics for us right now. We continue to do our internet filtering and tweak that, and all of our devices are filtered even if they're off of our network. We do light speed alerts. In other words, if there is -- on our student devices, if there is concerning behavior or searches or activity that is self-harm, harm to others, harm to the district, it starts alerting, and they actually have people monitoring the system 24/7. And if, depending on the level, it will email, or if it is urgent self-harm, it will start calling. And we have a call tree that will call school personnel. If they can't get them, then it starts calling district administrators and so that we can protect our kids and hope to stop anything that, you know, we can possibly stop and protect our kiddos. We have been expanding our security cameras across the district. We've been, as you know, we've been adding door access control at each of our locations. We've been with -- through time, we're working to replace our telephone system. So, this round, we're working on Fannin and McGill. We've already done Fannin's. McGill's will be done before the end of the semester. And then we're also pledging to replace and put a new phone -- I mean, sorry, new intercom system into McGill as that will be our pilot to try out a new intercom system. We're always looking for grant funding to help fund technology. E-rate is an ongoing one. We'll continue to do that. That helps fund 80% of our network infrastructure upgrades. And so far, over the last 20 years, we've been about $21 million for this district. Emergency connectivity fund is done. It funded some of our devices to get us to the one-to-one, but we're still kind of wrapping up documentation related to that. But that grant funding has ended, but you may still hear it in the news once in a while. But it -- unfortunately, we don't have any more money from it. So, as I mentioned, we have had a number of moves, and I'll wrap up with showing you a little bit about our move. So, our technology department has moved to what was the Altaloma Elementary campus, and that campus is being repurposed to be the new technology center. So, our old space at Sousa, at Central High School, was converted to seven classrooms for the campus to have more classrooms. And it is a win-win for the campus and for us because they needed the classroom space, and we were actually outgrowing and very tight on space there as well. So, this is a picture of when you walked in the foyer, and my help desk person was on the left. The middle picture is I'm standing at the front door, and my secretary was on the right. We had no controlled vestibule like you'll see at most campuses. As well, it's a pretty snug fit in there. And if you look at the middle picture, you can see one of my manager's offices full of boxes. Every person's office became full of boxes or parts and spare equipment because we were running out of space. And so, this is now where we're at at Altaloma, and so we do have controlled access. And so, you'll see there are three windows. Two of the windows go to our help desk staff, and one goes to my secretary. And so, it is a great setup. People can come in, get help, and then go on, or we can get deliveries, or people can come meet with us. It's just a really great setup right there. This is a picture of one of my office spaces at the old location. This is -- all of our rooms had like at least four people in them. So, this is one office going -- taking pictures going around the room, and you can see how close together the desks were. There was barely space to walk between the desks because we were so snug. And so, it was -- if they had extra equipment sitting around, you had to climb over equipment, literally. And this is their office space now. So, this is two classrooms that have four technicians each in a classroom. Now, they have space without stepping on each other or having to climb over equipment, and they have space. We're still not fully organized, so bear with us, but we are getting some of our stuff moved in. So, we've only moved our office space. We still have what was our downstairs space at Sousa to move. That's where all of our spare equipment is. Over half of our storage space is the actual underneath part of Sousa Building, as in, you go through the door and you see the sewer pipes, the pipes of the campus, and it's not the most pleasant of spaces to go. So, we are thrilled to move our equipment out of there, and they will be moving into some of the other classrooms in the outer buildings, and we'll be able to organize a lot better because literally the pipes came to about my nose level, and so we couldn't stack very high either. So, my last slide is -- the left is our current break room. I did not -- I forgot to take some other pictures before we moved. Our break room at the old space was one folding table with four chairs in a closet that was actually electrical closet and had a refrigerator and a microwave in it. And so, now we have space to have all of our staff together to have a luncheon, and we even had a retirement reception already in there. And the middle will be our conference room. We're still working on setting it up. The right-hand picture is an outdoor covered area space, which will come in very handy when we have large shipments or we have equipment to be picked up for disposal because it has to be palletized. And what's been happening is the company works in the alleyway there between Off-Look 306 and Sousa Building in the heat of the day. And same for when we get big shipments. It gets unloaded into the parking lot, and then we work in the heat to get it into the building. Now, we'll have a covered space to actually do that unloading because truck drivers don't like to stay long. They come, they drop, and they go. So, we'll have a covered space to work under, and so this will be really helpful to our staff. Some other benefits of our move, and I'm hoping you'll approve later tonight, is hopefully you'll approve the move of our server room over there that will allow us to have extra capacity in regards to how suddenly can Optimum runs our phone, our network connectivity, as well as will have -- give us the capacity to add a generator if approved, which we can't do, is a struggle to do at Sousa because we're by the river. So, I appreciate your time. If there's any questions I can answer, I'll be glad to answer. But thank you for your support of our department, and thank you for allowing us to move to Altaloma Campus. It's great. My staff are so happy to be there.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. It's been a busy last few years for you and your department.
It has.
Device expansion, network expansion.
Yes.
Box expansion, whatever, expansion in general. Any other questions for Mr. Wall? Thanks for coming out. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you all. I greatly appreciate it.
We understand that we are not connected without you, so thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have a TEA intruder detection audit, and Coach Walters -- excuse me, Scott Walters is going to have -- is going to help us with that. He was my kid's coach for many years. He started -- I think he started coaching when he was 14 because I'm pretty old, so -- but he's --
Yeah, that makes me feel good. I haven't heard that in years. That makes me feel good. Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the board, thank you for all the effort and time that you put into our school district. Need to bring before you that the months of September and October, we've had some intruder detection audits that were done by the Region 15 Center. They were done. If any corrections were needed, they have been dealt with, have been intended to by the campus administration. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. Walters, thank you very much. I know that there's a lot more than just that short sentence that goes into that, but in the effort at keeping our schools and our kids secure, a lot of those details are left out as long as we have the good sign that we're on the right track. Thank you very much. And last, on updates, we've got a construction update from Mr. Henry. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. We're going to go ahead and jump right into our two major construction projects. The first one we're going to talk about is McGill Elementary. McGill's moving quickly. Currently, we have all the painting is completely done on the entire inside. All the millwork is in, the HVAC is connected and running, and then the new switchgear is planned for switch-over this Friday. They're going to do all that. They've done a great job on protecting all the finishes. As you can see on that picture on the right side, that's the big grand hallway that goes all the way through the new construction, and they've covered every inch of carpet that they've put in from wall to wall with ramboard to make sure they don't get anything on it or anything like that. So, it's going to look real good when we open it up. Asphalt will probably be the last thing that you see coming in, just so that we don't have all the construction equipment driving over it. The next picture, this is the kitchen. This is a real exciting place, lots of stuff going on in it. I really -- I think the lights turned out great. They still have to put some ceiling tile in. We're waiting to finish up all of the wiring for the intercom system to finally put all that ceiling grid in. All the kitchen equipment is onsite and in the kitchen. You can see the serving lines there on the left-hand side. Looks great. The -- all the training has been scheduled, and the child nutrition department's been notified. Do you all have any questions over McGill?
It's looking good.
No? We'll move on to Fannin then. On the exterior, we still have some dirt work that's going on. Items that we need to do to finish, and this is in the order that they're going to have to do them, a little bit of dressing and landscaping. As you can see there on that bottom picture, they sodded the retaining area where the water all collects. Every bit of the water off of the roof will end up going through this, and then it goes across the playground and then down into the river. The next -- they'll also have to do the gutters. They're waiting to get all the dressing in so that they don't bang up the gutters while they're putting in topsoil. We had a little issue with the sidewalk, making sure it was ADA accessible to that play court, so we stopped and had them redraw that to make sure we could get everybody who we needed on there to be able to get to that play court. So, they're getting ready to pour the side -- they'll pour the sidewalk first. That's going to happen on Wednesday, and then the play court hopefully at the end of the week or the beginning of next week. The picture on the left-hand side, you can see some of the nice fencing that we've been putting up over there. It is eight-foot fencing wherever we're replacing. We're putting in the eight-foot fencing. Here's a picture of the inside. The inside punch list, I think they -- I can't remember exactly how many pages of punch items, but it was a bunch of punch items. And like I said the last time, they were a whole bunch of little bitty things. The only two things that I could find that we still needed to cover was there's one vent that's missing in an entryway, and then we have an auto flash -- auto flush valve that needs to be changed out that's not working. This is a picture of the clouds on the inside in the hallways, and McGill will have similar finishes as well. Are there any questions over the construction stuff?
Any questions for Mr. Henry? We're still on track for McGill for
Yes, sir.
December move?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, we can start with the financial reports. The August financial report begins on page seven. Page 10 shows an uncommitted fund balance of $47 million procs, which has been holding steady. Committed funds at this point show 4.7 million remaining for some of the construction projects that were allocated in the funds last year. It'll change as we move funds from M&amp;O to the committed funds, but anyway. Page 13 shows our August revenues and expenditures. Our revenues fell short at 97.6% for the year, actually, because that's a complete year. And then the other good thing is that our expenditures came in a little under 2 at 94.2%. So, that helps us remain solvent as we move forward to try to keep things going around here. The next, page 14 through 34, shows the August check register. I'm not sure -- and that's the August reports. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on that. Anybody question about checks or anything like that? I know we put those pretty heavily this weekend, didn't see anything that was out of line, so. Now, we can move to page 35, which begins our September financials. Page 37 shows an uncommitted fund balance, again, of 47 million. It also shows the committed funds of 8 million out of that. So, again, we moved a little more funds from our fund balance to finish our construction projects that were going in. This basically is 8 million, I think completes our Fannin and our Altaloma projects moving forward. Page 40 again shows our September revenues and expenses. Our revenues are at 11.1%, which mostly comes from the state this time of year. We don't see the local funds kick in until December or January when we see most of that. So, the state is usually kind enough to fund us early on. Then the local revenue takes over for the few months, and then the state finishes up at the end of the cycle to keep us on track with our revenues coming in. And again, our expenses for the first month of this current fiscal year, we're technically at 7%. We could be up to 8% and still be in line with where we're going, so we're on track at this point with expenses. And then page 41 through 51 is our September check register. Not sure if there's any questions on that. Didn't see anything that was majoring out of line on that either, so. Anybody questions? Okay. If not, we can move to page 52 through 56, which is our August monthly investment report. Again, the district total invested funds at the end of August were approximately 67 millions. Interest earned for that month was $312,000 and some change. An interest earned in the general fund only was $279,000 and some change. Interest rates varied slightly. Page 57 through 61 shows the investment report for September. Again, slightly less, 64 million in invested funds. That's kind of spending down as we draw out money to pay for our construction projects. Interest earned for the month was $281,000 and some change. Interest rates again were pretty healthy at 5.16% to 5.33%. Those are the two monthly investment reports. There's a quarterly investment report that you'll see at your place. It'll be included in your next -- included next week in the agenda. But the district's total investments as of August 31st, again, 67 million, and the interest for the quarter was $947,000 and some change. Lastly, there was an annual investment report. That's on page 63 to 65. Again, the district's total investments as of August 31st, again, 67 million procs. Interest earned for the fiscal year was 4.2 million and some change, and that's a comparison report for '22, '23. So, that was certainly good news as far as our investments are concerned. Any question on any of the investment reports? Not, we can move to page 66 and 67, which is our tax collection report. Our tax collections in both years, 2022 and 2023, are at 100% or slightly above. That includes this year's collections, which were about 97, 88% in the delinquent taxes, which we had gained some. So, both are slightly over 100%. Again, notice the difference. Tax collections for 2022, $66 million locally in tax collections for 2023, were $54 million. There's no questions about the tax collection report? Our purchasing reports start on page 68 through 77. These are just routine purchases that are large amounts. It's been a busy beginning of the year. I can't remember the one that struck my fancy was the amount of ground beef that we bought for a year, so. Everything else was as normal or what we had been talking about for the last few months and finally getting a PO out there to approve them, so. I'm sure any questions about the purchasing report? Lots of -- yeah. Lots of a little bit of everything. If there are no other questions on the purchasing report, that concludes our financial report. Dr. Kingman, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dindell. We're going to move forward. We do have some action items on our agenda this evening. The first is The first is item five, which is consider nomination of candidates to serve on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District for the '25, '26 term and the '25, '27 through '27 term. And Dr. Brandon's gonna explain to us why it's grown up that way.
Dr. Rand, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees. You have that time of year to nominate members to the CAD Board of Directors. Senate Bill Two certainly shook things up for the County Appraisal District with three new elected members, for nine total. So from the five, three elected members and then the chief appraiser acting as one of those ex-officio member, to have nine total. This evening, we're simply nominating, and then we'll cast votes in the November board meeting. So our recommendation, the five incumbents that are there, Bob Reeves and Eric Wilson, for the one-year term, and then Candy Pool, Louis Gomez, and Scott Tankersley for the three-year term.
And everything will be a three-year term after this year? It's just trying to get it correct as far as getting it staggered, correct?
So I believe four-year terms. Staggered, in that first paragraph of the resolution, provides that the directors appointed by the taxing units participating districts serve staggered four-year terms. Yeah, so it'd be every other year. We won't have to do anything on the election side. That will take care of itself in November. But every other year, then we'll have a year in there that we don't do any, just to keep those staggered. But then we'll be nominating those on those four-year staggered terms.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution nominating five board members to serve a two-year term on the Tom Green County Appraisal District Board of Directors? Those names, just name all five names?
Two, two or...
So one-year term for Mr. Reeves and Mr. Wilson from January 1, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, and then a...
Three-year.
That...
The three-year term.
Three-year term for Candy Pool, Louis Gomez, and Scott Tankersley. So that's from January through December of 2027.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Geigos and a second from Mr. Dindel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, next. We have bid 24-021. It's the Fannin Elementary HVAC replacement. And Mr. Henry is gonna come give us an update on that.
Thank you. Tonight, I bring you bid 24-021, Fannin Elementary HVAC replacement. During the '23, '24 school year, Fannin Elementary discovered that several of their rooftop units needed extensive heat exchanger work on the more than 20-year-old units. It was decided at this time that the units would need to be replaced. With the assistance of Park Hill Architects, specifications and drawings were produced to replace the 10 units that are on the '97 construction. Bids were opened and two contractors submitted quality bids for this work. Once reviewed, Onyx of San Angelo received the highest score. The administration recommends approval of Onyx of San Angelo to replace 10 units located at Fannin Elementary for the total cost of $169,382.40, which includes a $50,000 contingency. Do you all have any questions over that?
And just to confirm, this is coming out of fund balance, but this is what we talked about doing a year ago when we started doing the, when we were doing the Fannin addition and making sure that the original part of the campus was also brought up to date as far as HVAC?
Correct.
Mr. Henry, there's a significant difference between the low bid and the other two. They feel confident these guys can perform the work?
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. I'm glad you brought that up. I know you guys always ask if there's a difference, and I always seek out to find out why there is a difference also. I contacted Onyx, and normally these variances come from the contractor self-performing a large amount of the work, which Onyx is gonna do there. A carrier dealer, they're gonna do all the work themselves in-house. The other thing that she brought up to us that I wanted to make sure I expressed was that Onyx, whenever we buy equipment from them, they have a zero markup to us or ASU. They don't charge us any markup whatsoever of the equipment. So they pass the savings completely on to us. And that's where some of that comes from as well.
Good, good news.
Any other questions for Mr. Henry regarding the bid 24-021? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. The administration, I'm sorry, sorry. I move to approve for Onyx of San Angelo to replace the 10 units located at Fannin Elementary for the total cost of $196,382.40, which includes a $50,000 contingency.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion for Mrs. Mizell Flint and a second for Mrs. Arroyo. Do I have any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Next, we have bid 24-020. It's the Altaloma Data Center and Electrical Repair.
After the district's evaluation of campuses, it was decided that the closure of Central Oaks would not only increase students' classroom time, but also decrease transportation and maintenance costs. To accommodate this increase in students at Central High School, the technology department was moved out of Sousa Hall into the repurposed part of Altaloma for the new district data center. During the development of this project, an accident at Altaloma took out part of the electrical. This repair was added to this project. Pricing also includes the demolition of three buildings at Altaloma campus. With the assistance of Park Hill Architects, Crux, and Kings Consultants, specifications and drawings were produced to relocate the data center, repair the electrical, abate the asbestos, and demo three buildings. Bids were opened and two contractors submitted quality bids for this work. Bids were reviewed by a scoring committee, and Midtech of Midland received the highest score. The administration recommends approval for Midtech of Midland to relocate the data center, repair the electrical, abate the asbestos, and demo three buildings for a negotiated price of $2,486,100, which includes $190,000 contingency.
And Mr. Henry, very similar question, but I just wanna make sure this was, when we started working on consolidating campuses, we talked about how we didn't want to leave buildings just deteriorating in the neighborhoods where we were going. And this is dollars that were allocated at that time into our committed fund balance for construction in order to make sure that this could be done out of that same pocket?
Correct.
Any other questions?
What electrical work? I know they had that accident where that guy hit that thing right there. What are we gonna do?
The person who hit the electrical, it ended up knocking the electrical out in three or four different buildings. And it's kind of odd, because in some of the buildings, the lights work, but maybe none of the plugs work, or vice versa, or it has air conditioning but nothing else. Lots of that electrical goes through those same panels, and that's what the replacement is gonna be. We actually didn't have to go back with as big of an electrical service due to us tearing down those three buildings. So it actually ended up making it a little less expensive doing it.
Okay, and all this includes the asbestos removal and the demolition of all three of them? What three buildings are we getting rid of anyway?
The three oldest ones, the ones on the corner, the two in the back, and then the cafeteria.
Okay, all right.
And just for clarification, so anyone who knows, the accident was actually like a true car accident that ran into our... I know the board is aware of that, but just to, it was a true...
It was a true accident.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Henry regarding this? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for Midtech of Midland to relocate data center repair. Start that over. I'll make a motion to approve for Midtech of Midland to relocate the data center, repair the electrical, abate the asbestos, and demo three buildings for a negotiated price of $2,486,100, which includes $190,000 contingency.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion for Mr. Geigos and a second from Dr. Mills. Is there any further board comment or questions? This does include the disposal of all of that material?
Correct.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, moving forward. We next have consider purchases, purchase of school buses. It's on page 87.
I'm gonna just kinda start the conversation, and then Mr. Livingston is going to kinda give you some details and answer questions about the fleet in general. So we appreciate Mr. Livingston being with us. It's been very welcoming to have him, and lots of compliments from our transportation staff. So we're certainly glad that he's a member of our team. We recently blew an engine in one of the van hools and threw a piston through the side of the block. And then we also have one of our white fleet that's in Dallas that, no fault of our own coach, but we had a car run through a red light at an intersection in T-Bone, one of the freight liners, and it's still sitting at a body shop in Dallas waiting to be repaired. So as we move into the spring, everybody knows what the spring is like with travel for our student athletes. And so being two down in the fleet would certainly be detrimental. And so we've talked about the replenishing of the fleet, you know, each year. And we had that drawn up in the capital outlay. It was very close to a million. That's what we've spent the last two years. But Mr. Livingston has found a way to provide a couple of travel buses along with three of the yellow route buses and stay with, very close to that figure. So I'm gonna let him kinda talk you through that.
Dr. Moran, board members. I'm pleased to be here this evening. My name's Lee Livingston. I am the Director of Transportation. It's my first time being here since I got here in July. So thank you for having me tonight. And we do have on as an action item to purchase the five units. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Mr. Livingston, I know we're moving to this. These two 46-passenger travel buses are a little different than we've had before. The Bluebird version.
Correct, they are.
The other thing is that they're significantly less expensive than our freightliner. And I know that we've been trying to update our fleet, not only our yellow fleet, but our white fleet too. So I know when I was speaking with Dr. Brandon, the two white, the two in the white fleet that we're looking at are immediately available. So that would definitely be a great relief to the school district as far as travel in the spring and also as far as leasing or renting any additional buses as we move forward. So as long as you have, as the transportation expert thinks that those are gonna be adequate, then I would certainly be in favor of this.
They're definitely gonna suit our purpose. So it may not have as much storage capacity as the van hools have, but actually they probably have close to what we have in those freight liners. I'm not saying we should go away from the freight liners in the future, but this is something that would benefit us in the immediate timeframe. And they'll have the same longevity as the, or should have the same longevity as the freight liners do. So.
On the travel buses, Mr. Livingston, I was gonna ask you. Repair, I know like the van hools, we have to send to Dallas for them to fix them. And then the freight liners, is that we can work on them here? We can get parts locally. Is it gonna be the same with these 46?
Yes, yes. Same manufacturers, our yellow fleet. So we'll have the same service.
And as far as our yellow, our transport, our in-house, our YellowDogs, as far as those, keeping on track to replace those by taking away those two buses this year, you're confident that we can keep our fleet young enough to do what it needs to do as well locally?
I'm confident, yeah, right now. But that also means we gotta stay on top of it the next couple of years, make sure that we keep our numbers up.
All right. And the YellowDog buses, they are not, they'll be the same wait time that has been traditional, where we're still waiting six to eight months to get those buses?
Yeah, they, the dealer had put a purchase in for those white buses to have some... As long as you're okay. Yes, the dealer had put in a number of these to have on hand as, basically as stock units. The nice part about it, we're still early enough in the build process that we can get a few things done to them that are a little bit more to our liking. So that's the nice part about doing this in this way.
Well, and as you said, Mr. Livingston, likely the price that we'll save in not chartering buses this spring by being able to immediately get two more travel buses will offset some of this cost as well.
Definitely, yes.
Any idea what we're gonna be getting those other two back? The van hole and the, or are we getting it fixed or...
The van hole is a 2003 model. And the only way of fixing it is to start with a new engine or a different engine. Put $20,000 or $30,000 in it. You put a for sale sign on, you might get 10 out of it, might.
Might.
So in my opinion, it's not worth doing anything with. And we've actually are gonna bring that to you as well, that we go ahead and disperse that in the near future, probably next month.
And in the freight liner, when will we get that one back?
I don't have a date on it yet. It had about $50,000 worth of damage to it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
All right, any other board questions or comments? All right, do I have a motion to approve or not? Do I have a motion regarding this action item?
Dr. Kingman, I move to approve buying five school buses from A to Z Bus Sales. Recommendation includes two 46-passenger travel buses, one 47-passenger special edition type C bus with a gasoline engine, and two 72-passenger general education type C buses with gasoline engines. The total buy board, one-time purchase price for all five units will be $1,063,100. And with that, welcome to SAISD, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, thank you.
It's good to meet you for the first time.
Good to meet you, Frank, too.
So I have a motion for Mr. Dindel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Easy. I'm gonna give Mrs. Mizell Flint the second. Ladies first. So I have a motion for Mr. Dindel and a second for Mrs. Mizell Flint. Do I have any further board comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All again say the same. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston, for being here. Alright, last action item before we go through our proposed agenda is consider new and used vehicles. And this is just, this is just a question, but none of these bids actually have numbers on them, any, they're not...
This one is actually, it's two bids that have been extended.
Just for documentation, if we can make sure that we list the bid numbers.
Sure, we can definitely do that, I'll get them on there.
Thanks.
During the 22-23 school year, bids were prepared and received by the purchasing department for the purchase of both new and used vehicles. These bids have been extended upon the agreement of the vendor and the district. As part of the capital outlay, purchasing and child nutrition requested new vehicles or used vehicles. The government buying window has opened for the purchasing department van, and a used vehicle has also become available for the child nutrition department. Both of these bids were awarded to Jim Bass Ford, and both allow for the purchase of new and used vehicles as needed at a negotiated price. The administration recommends purchasing one new 2024 Ford Transit van for fifty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and one used Ford Explorer for thirty thousand two dollars and twenty-five cents. Total cost for these vehicles purchased at this time is eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Any questions for Mr. Henry?
I have a question, are these to replenish something that's already there, or are we getting additional vehicles, or what?
I believe the child nutrition department is retiring one, I think they have a Ford Expedition that they're, they're going to be retiring, and then the Transit van is an addition for the warehouse that the district added for our new warehouse guy to deliver furniture and textbooks in.
Alright, thank you.
Dr. Mills, we end up with, we end up with situations where we don't have furniture, textbooks, things like that covered. You know, they put it on the back of a trailer, in the back of the pickup, and things of that nature, furniture that is still in good condition, that the Transit van is, would be able to put that inside, and then even if something was not be able to take to a campus immediately, it could be loaded and held, and then delivered the next day. So, we've struggled some with trying to deliver across the district with just the trailer or the back of the pickup, so...
And this, this comes out of the child nutrition committed dollars as well from us, from their budget, correct?
The Explorer, the Explorer would, yes. They've budgeted for that and have that approved on the thirty thousand, the fifty-nine was, would be general fund, and was part of our capital outlay request list.
Any further board questions or comments? Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve one new 2024 Ford Transit van for fifty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and one used Ford Explorer for thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand and two dollars and twenty-five cents. Total cost for vehicles was eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second.
Alright, so I have a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mr. Dindel. Do I have any further board comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All again say the same. Motion passes seven zero. Alright. Now we're going to go through our proposed agenda for October 28th, invocation, pledge, recognitions. So, we'll have several recognitions next week. We're gonna have a construction update, and then Dr. Moran's gonna give us an update on some, basically some PEMS changes. Are you gonna do any of that tonight, or just next week?
I can give the board a two-minute tour of that, but essentially the PEMS system, the Public Education Information Management System of Texas, is the data hub for all things related to schools, and really drive all the finances from the state to the schools. So, anything we do is tracked, and then that is reflected in the amount of funding we get. PEMS is the way that happens. TSDS is the platform that we've used for the past few years, and that's converting to EDFI. There's, there's been a two-year process going on across the state, every district has to move from TSDS to EDFI. We've been a pilot district, so we've had a chance to get a test run, but there's major concern from districts across the state as far as the success of the vendors that are involved, and that if TEA can actually manage what's about to happen. Myself and three other districts met with the commissioner virtually, expressed those concerns, and Dr. Brandon and Mr. Combs, who's actually the point of the spear for us, will present more specific information to the board. This is really just to give you a heads up, that we're, we're working on this transition, and it's, it's a big deal, and it's likely to be roughgoing for everyone in the state for the next foreseeable future. But essentially, this changes from periodic submissions to daily updates and submissions, and there's been a lot of heartburn over this and concern on our part.
Alright, so we'll get a full report on that next week. We're also gonna get an update on chapter thirty-seven of the Texas Education Code next week.
That's right, and this will just be an update for the board as to the progress being made as we enter the eighty-ninth legislative session, and things we're proposing to our legislators to help recruit and retain teachers as it, as it relates to student discipline and the authority we have, and the, the responsibility that parents should have in their child's education.
Alright.
You're gonna give a report on that as well? Yes, yeah, you'll get a report on that.
And then, an update on Proposition A. Dr. Brandon, you gonna give us an update next week, this week?
Next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Update, I'm gonna give us, early voting is open. So, make sure, everyone needs to go out and vote. The next is consent items, so as we go through our agenda, let's look and see what can be consent. And we got donations, we have our minutes, we have the emergency operations plan, the bills, finances, statements for August and September.
Keep that regular.
Regular. We're gonna hear about our financial integrity rating for the San Antonio Independent School Districts, that we'll have a public hearing on that next week. Congratulations, Dr. Brandon, I believe we have a hundred again.
It is, the district did receive the superior achievement, the highest rating, with a score of one hundred, and so we'll go over the indicators with the board next Monday night.
Perfect, thank you for your work on that.
Regular.
We'll keep that regular. The approval of the annual, annual portfolio report.
Consent.
No, we need to bring Christina Chouas in. She gets mad when I say that.
Then, we're gonna have authorized, the authorized list of investment brokers and dealers, that's something we do every year, this time of year.
Any changes, Dr. Brandon?
No changes on the trainers, the brokers, or the local investment policy, CDA Local.
So, is everyone okay with that being consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board?
Yes.
J K and L.
So, J K and L are all consent? Thank you, Dr. Brandon, but I wasn't gonna... Alright, so then we have bid twenty dash zero one four, which is a curriculum instruction materials. This is just a annual update, I believe.
It's an adder.
To the add, yeah. So, we're adding one. Any questions? Mr. Henry, do you want to explain what we're doing with that?
That one's just an adder, it's a curriculum bid that we have ongoing that we can receive bids for, and that was one that the curriculum department brought forward.
Perfect. Alright, everyone okay with that being consent? And then bid twenty-three dash zero two five is data cabling and AV installation. You gonna give us an update on that, Mr. Henry, at the moment?
Sure, each year we put out a, we do various cable drops throughout this, out the school district, and we bid this out every year to get pricing on those different network drops, telephone drops, cable video drops, and others. We sent this bid out to nineteen different companies who provide this type of work. Bids were opened, and only one response was received, and it was from the incumbent Elite Solutions, and they held their price firm from last year's bid, and they were also the awarded vendor the year before that, and their pricing is still the same over the last three years. The administration recommends Elite Solutions for the award.
Everyone okay with consent for that one? Alright. Mr. Henry, how about bid twenty-four dash zero two two, library books, periodicals, supplies, and equipment?
This last one is an annual bid to establish a list of vendors for library books and supplies. This year we had twenty-four vendors that responded to the bid. The attached bid tab lists all catalog vendors for books, periodicals, subscriptions, equipment, and miscellaneous library material. Any single item valued over thirty-five hundred will require the attempt to obtain three quotes. This contract period is for November one, twenty twenty-four through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Henry, any new vendors on that? It's like a lot of the same. It's usually a lot of the same, yes. A lot of same vendors from last year? Correct.
Any questions about the vendors on the library books, periodicals, supplies, and equipment? Or any board comment, questions? Okay. Consent, if everyone's okay with that. So, now, Dr. Gomez is going to be presenting, you gonna present tonight on the Health Advisory Council?
I can, but I think it's, we do it every two years, the board appoints, so it's just a reminder that this is an advisory council made up primarily of community members to provide aspects of the school health program. So, all of the members attached there for you have been contacted and have agreed to serve for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
And does that, that can be consent, that does not have to be regular? Does everyone have any questions about this school health advisory council roster? I'm okay with making that consent, anyone have any issues with that? Consent it is. Alright, next is consider official appointment to, to the Board of Trustees of the MHMR. So, these are the nominees that were requested by the liaison representatives, in our cases, Mrs. Pam Duncan. Any, they're all reappoint, excuse me, four out of five are reappointments, there's one new appointment, Mr. Peterson, Drew Peterson. Any questions or comments regarding the appointment to the Board of Trustees of the MHMR services of the Contra Valley?
I'll have to recuse myself from that, since I work with MHMR.
So, let's keep that regular, that way we can, that way we don't have to recuse for the consent.
Dr. Kingman, I apologize, Scott Walters did have a couple of notes on the EOP, just to give the board members a quick heads up, since you do have a confidential copy.
Yeah, I didn't know if we could talk about that in public, so that's why I was...
He won't go into any detail, but just the logistics of the document itself before next Monday.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Walters, I'm sorry, I skipped over it on purpose, but I didn't notice.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. In front of you, you have our basic EOP, which is highly confidential. It is just something that has to be approved by the board, and so it is a living document. It does change from time to time, but this has been submitted to the Texas School Safety Center, and they may send back a few corrections, and if so, we will make those changes throughout the, the document itself. Last year, when I submitted it, I believe we had three changes, and all of those had something to do with page numbers. So, it could be very, very simple that we change. But I do ask that you review that, and then I guess next week, based on your thoughts, approval, or return it to be worked on a little more.
I will just remind the board, I know y'all are aware of this, but this is something we keep very confidential, and make sure that there's no reason for that information to be anywhere but where it needs to be.
And one more thing, if you do have questions about it, please call. I've put my card inside the folder, I just don't think an email would be sufficient with this, if you'd just, please give me a call.
Absolutely. So, if anyone has any questions regarding that, if we make sure that Mr. Walters knows that before, before Thursday of this week, so he has time before our Monday meeting, and then if we need to make any changes before our Monday, and if there's something that y'all feel that needs to be discussed as a board, we need to make sure I'm aware of that, so I can, we can direct the meeting appropriately next week. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Okay. So, we have announcements, we have a finance pre-agenda workshop, what do you mean, next week? We have finance pre-agenda workshop November eleventh, and the regular board meeting November eighteenth. And we do need very quickly to go into executive session under real property, seven four, no, excuse me, five five one oh seven two. We'll be right back. Alright, it is...
Seven oh six.
Seven oh six, we are back from executive session, we took no votes and no action, but with that being said, we are now adjourned, thank you.